Another continuance, so the meeting, our meeting isn't anticipated to be very long. So, that's what tonight, we're sorry that you're in inconvenience, but that's just the way it goes sometimes.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, did you want to say something?
I would just say, we're certainly not continuing intentionally, it was just a scheduling conflict, and I apologize. If you do give me your email address, I'll keep you apprised of the next meeting.
That's even better. Thank you, Greg.
I think that was March 19th.
March 19th is the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Did we make a motion yet?
We did not.
Move to continue the application for five Williamsburg Lane to March 19th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So now you guys will get a heads up, that should be helpful.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. The next continuance is, which was continued from January 15th, 2015, request for the zoning board appeals to review changes with regard to the comprehensive permit issued January 16th, 2003, and yes, I read that correctly, to Stockbridge Realty Trust. Project is located at 90 Stockbridge Road, and they are working out details of some issues with respect to...
Stormwater and various protections of what's a tributary ultimately to the water supply source of Green Bush Pond.
Okay, and I know that's been, if anybody's here tonight on that, that has been continued a number of times, but everybody between the town and the applicant wants to have something that they can present to the board, which is, you know, hopefully to be allowed, so that's what's taking that. They're doing, everybody's doing their best work on that, too, so, do we have an app, motion on that one?
Move to continue the hearing on Stockbridge Realty Trust.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, is that a aye to somebody, or?
Aye.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay. So, we have, are we on tonight? Oh, yeah, we are, we're being taped tonight. So, we'll go forward, just remind everybody, this is televised, so if people will be sure to speak clearly, and anybody who has comments on any of the applications, when it's time for public comments, be sure to, you know, raise your hand, identify yourself for the record, and address the board, not the applicants. Okay, so, then, we go forward to Dustin Durkey and Jean Durkey of 38 Curtis Street, Situate, requesting a special permit under section 810.2 of the Situate zoning bylaws to construct a two-story addition conforming to a non, to an existing non-conforming structure.
My name's Greg Morse, with Morse Engineering, I'm a registered engineer. With me is the architect, Kirk Hundig, for the project, and the property owner and applicant, Dustin and Jean Durkey. We're here seeking permission in accordance with section 810.2 of the bylaw to construct a two-story addition to the Dirk needs residence. The property is located at 38 Curtis Street, located in the R2 zone of district, shown on the assessor's maps as parcel 2618. The plan that we submitted with the application shows the property line in bold, you have Curtis Street down on the bottom of the plan, you have the existing dwelling showing brown. The lot itself consists of 15,000 square feet, it is entirely upland area. The proposal is to add a two-story addition again to the back of the property, I've highlighted that addition in hot pink on the plan. The addition itself is 19 by 25 feet, it adds a total of 779 square feet to the house. The existing house is 1862 square feet, so that represents a 41% increase in floor area. It'll put the entire dwelling at a total size of 2641, which we feel is a modest-sized house, the neighbors' houses are of similar size, the neighbors are at 3,700 square feet and 2,600 square feet, so it's in keeping in tune with the neighborhood. To make the finding, the board needs to find a couple of things, they need to find that the existing dwelling is non-conforming. In this location, the lot itself is non-conforming, it's the 20,000-foot zone, the lot is 15,000 square feet. The dwelling is non-conforming with respect to lot width being 100 feet, it's also non-conforming with respect to the side yard setback at 12.1 feet on the left side. The proposed addition complies with all of the setbacks, the side yard and the rear yard setback, it's within the zoning setback lines. We don't feel that it will be detrimental, again, for the stated reasons that it's in keeping in tune with the neighbors' sizes. We turn it over for any questions.
Would you just give me the square feet, it's an addition of 779 square feet, and what's the existing?
1862 is the existing.
And so there is a, what'd you say, a 40?
2641 is the proposal, it's a 41.8% increase.
Okay, I don't have any questions, Frank, do you have any?
So, the, the side setback is staying the same, is that right?
Correct, the side setbacks in the zoning district are 15 feet, the addition complies with the side setbacks.
So you're not increasing...
You're not actually, you're not increasing any of the...
Non-conformities, no.
Okay. No questions.
Anthony or John?
And what's there now, just a bulkhead, that's where you kind of add the two stories of a septic system?
There's a back, and... Yeah, there's a, there's a septic system in the backyard, we're going to do a permit with the board to help to relocate the project.
And driveway could remain the same area, and no other work to the house as part of the addition, just the addition as opposed to the main house?
There'll be a little bit of renovation work on the inside, John.
Basically, yeah, basically, you're not adding a square foot to the house, just the addition that you're saying. And, let's see, the shed there now, but that's...
That would stay.
Yeah.
Bob, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I really don't. I think it's important that it's in scale with the rest of the neighborhood, certainly the lot's not that constricted that it's going to stand out and look out of place, it seems to me.
You all even see the addition from the plan?
Right. Does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? Okay, do we have a motion from the board?
Motion to grant a special permit under section 810.2 to construct the two-story addition as shown on the plan prepared by Morse Engineering and dated January 21st, 2015.
Any amendments to the motion?
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to find and just state what the non-conformities are, and then find that, and then make a determination as to whether there's a increase or intensification of any of the non-conformities, which I don't think there is, but I think we have to...
The board finding that the existing property is non-conforming as to lot area, frontage, side setbacks, and lot width, and that the proposed addition would not increase any of the non-conformities, that would not be any more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Second, the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The applicant's attorney can do right with decision and forward that to you as a grant.
Sure, who's that going to be?
Chief Guard.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck. Do you need any of the plans back for permitting or anything?
Thank you, Mary.
To burn in your pot stove? To burn in your paper stove?
Well, actually, Steve's right here, too, that's a nice...
Might burn him on the green, but he's fine tomorrow.
Stay warm, Greg.
Take care.
It's going to be a challenge tonight.
Good luck, good luck traveling tomorrow.
Danny, do you have the, did you put the official package on mine, is this, is this the originals?
Yes.
Oh, okay. No, this is mine, actually, but how come I have this?
That was him.
Okay, are the Dirk, O'Connell's here?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I was looking for John also.
Um, he's in the lab.
Okay.
Good spot.
I have a funny job, I'm coming back, so...
All right, so this is, our last application is Paulette and John O'Connell of 2 Curtis Ave, Situate, requesting a special permit slash finding pursuant to 620.4 of the Situate zoning bylaw to allow construction of an addition to their pre-existing non-conforming home at 2 Curtis Ave.
Just a correction, it's printed, it's Curtis Ave?
It is.
But it just have your home listed as Curtis Road.
No, it's Ave.
Yeah, but there is a Curtis Road, I just don't want you...
Street Ave Road.
Your mail probably gets mixed up as it is.
Okay. Hello?
Hi, how are you doing?
Good. Are you going to speak, Paulette?
I am Paulette.
Okay, Paulette, what are you looking to do, then?
Okay, so, I, we've looked at this house for 15 years, so, and I'm also the architect, designer, and homeowner, so just to be upfront, so I've done all the drawings, and you know what I'm talking about to this extent. So, it's the same dwelling, it's a cape that has a one-story breezeway and one-story garage. All right, we'd like to remove the breezeway and the garage and add a larger, one-and-a-half story, it'll be a one-car garage with a mudroom, and then we could put a master bedroom above, and behind that, we'd like to add a great room, and trying to fit all this on the site with the angle of the existing dwelling, and create an open concept. We'd like to push the garage forward, and we are allowed to go out somewhat because it's non-conforming, and our neighbors are 17.9 feet away from Curtis Avenue, we're now currently 28.2, the corner lots are, we're supposed to be 30 feet from both streets, so 28.2 is not performing, we're allowed to go halfway in between, but we'd like to go four more feet closer to Curtis Avenue. That'll still leave us 19 feet, I do intend to keep the driveway there, widen it, be able to have two cars park into the driveway so that we're not on the street, and still be able to have the open concept inside and have the garage moving forward there. We're not, we're not doing anything to the other side on Situate Avenue, really, it's all up there at Curtis Ave, the neighbors at 6 Curtis Ave, and myself, that makes up the full, then there's a cross street at Seaview there, so there's really just the two of us. So I feel that coming out here, we're going to be even further back than the neighbors are next to us, we're not changing the landscape of the street, we're going to be adding about 900 square feet to the overall square footage of the house, and we're still going to be, you know, well within the sizes and the types of homes in there, we're trying to keep the profile low to match the existing cape, I'm really trying to keep the existing cape to look from the exterior as it hasn't been touched, and try to keep the addition off to the side. So, you'll notice if you were looking at 801, the issue that I'm talking about, if I were to push this all four feet back, my large nine-foot opening, which creates sort of an open concept plan, ends up just being a five-foot opening and it being pushed to the back, and that really sort of loses a lot from the interior of the home, and trying to get a 20-foot garage so you could park a car into it, so, you know, there's dimensions upon dimensions upon dimensions, which is why I've ended up here today to talk about that. I've lived in this neighborhood a long time, I'd like to see it turning around, like to see people staying and adding on and doing things here, I think there's been a lot of good things done in the neighborhood, there's been some not-so-good things done in the neighborhood, I really think that what I'm trying to do here will be beneficial, my neighbors have all been on board and have given me support, and have been willing to write letters if there's an issue from you guys, and I'd be willing to do so.
Okay. I'm a little bit confused from your drawing, from your plans, the footprint of the existing house, is it all the hashes?
On the site plan?
Yeah, on, yeah, on this.
Yes, and it's got the hash, the lines, so there's a dash, would you like me to draw that?
Yeah, that would be great. I don't know if anybody else, I get confused sometimes.
Okay.
I was with you.
The existing dwelling is all of this, the part that's dashed, striped, that's the part that's going to be demolished.
Okay, but this, but all of this is existing, right up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's all existing, and then there's an angle of the lot, or really just one portion of the home is going to be, you know, extending that non-conforming piece.
So is it, is it, is it back 28.2 feet?
Yes, correct.
From the line?
That's, yeah, and the reason it's got a different hash is because I'm taking this portion of it.
And you want to go 19 feet?
Yes, and my neighbors here are 17.9, so I'm allowed the average.
So you want to, but it's, that's, that's an increase of nine feet.
But I'm allowed, because it's non-conforming, and the neighbors here, I'm allowed the average of the two.
That's a different question.
Yeah.
That's a different question.
I'm allowed to do that with coming in here in front of the board, I was told.
Well, the difficulty is, is that you are going further than, than, than that bylaw would allow you, which would then take you into a variance.
Okay, I was told that, all right.
Yeah.
All right, just giving...
See, that's the difficulty.
No, so, she's not disagreeing, I don't think, with what you're saying about the average.
It would be a different, yeah.
Because you're asking us to go, I think, approximately four feet further than what's allowed under...
Yes.
620.4.
Correct.
And that's where the variance comes in.
Right, that's where the problem comes in.
Yeah, big problem.
Yeah.
So, variances are rarely granted, the standard's much different.
Okay.
And much higher.
Okay.
So, as I was looking at your plan, to try to help you, and it may not be exactly what you wanted to do, but it seems to me, you've got room on the side, you've got 14 feet, and, and you're only, it's only eight foot in this, is it an eight foot in this zone? Yeah, your side, so you, you've got, you've got it to 14, you could actually go over, you know, even farther, because I'm thinking you're going to have to go this, you know, push it back and over, if you want to, because I know if you just pushed it back, you were going to, you'd lose what you were hoping to gain...
Yeah.
...in other areas. But the problem is, is when, the problem is not that you're asking us to allow you to, to take the average, that wouldn't be a problem certainly for me, and I would suspect for most of the board members, but the four extra feet is, is the problem for us.
Okay, but why, just specifically, why is that not a special permit, that a variance?
Because it's going into the setback, which, see, the, allowing yourself to go closer to the street for the average is a particular bylaw that gives us permission to let you do that.
Okay.
Otherwise, the setbacks are the setbacks, you know, the building envelope is the building envelope, and anything that takes you out of that requires a variance, which is a very, very high standard.
All right, all right, I haven't spoken.
Yeah.
Does not give that...
Does it require a variance, or...
I think it does.
I think it does, too, you're, you're asking us, in essence, to violate the bylaw, and that's the very high standard. There are instances where even, we have granted variances which...
Yep, not understand, there's certain particular sites that...
It's not the word we typically use, but in essence, it's a violation of the bylaw, and when, when situations meet those standards, I think there's some question with the board and with myself, to be honest, as to whether this situation meets that standard.
Then I understand.
Have you talked to a lawyer at all?
No.
Because the other concern I have is that this was not advertised as a variance request either, so, we can't...
Yeah, we couldn't even do that, but...
It, it does actually note the variance being requested on your plan.
Does it?
Over in the notes.
Those are the variance.
I noticed that, which is actually, I think is correct.
Okay.
But you still don't have, you just still don't have the criteria.
Regardless, I understand the point, I mean, I was, yeah, I, I get what you're saying now, and I was told that, you know, variances are different in special permits, because the town sort of does it a little bit differently, I do work in other towns, they just call everything a variance, and here it's different.
Well, the standard for the state, I mean, I was, I was just looking over case law, the standard for the state is say it's, it's, should be very rarely granted.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, then what's the sense of having setbacks?
No, I understand.
And, and again, it's great that your neighbors don't care, and it's, you know, I understand that your neighbor's closer, but the problem is, is that you're creating, you're creating a pretty significant, you know, increase of a non-conformity.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes, we have a lot of people when they've, you know, to kind of extend it, if it's not, if it's very small, and they're already in a setback, and maybe you can go a little bit farther, but you're taking it significantly closer to the street than, so you can, you could certainly go the, you could certainly go the, I wouldn't have any problem, what was it, what'd we say?
23.5 foot, 0.5.
Yeah.
Is that what you referred to, Frank?
The 20.5.
But 23.05.
It's the average, yeah, because she's got it correct, you've got it correct, adjacent home is 17.9, your home is 28.2, you take the two to divide it, and is 23.05. So...
Are you saying that that would...
They could go that much farther, they could go that much closer.
Without triggering a variance?
Correct. That's because that's...
I think that's, that's the point that, like, actually means.
Right, 620. Yeah. Bob, do you have anything to add to this discussion?
No, not really, I mean, that tracks with my understanding of the difference between a special permit and a variance also.
The code is a little strange in this instance, because I think if she was seeking 23.05, the way I read it, she wouldn't even need, she wouldn't even need a permit, right?
Right. Wouldn't need a special permit.
I wouldn't need...
She would need a building permit, yeah.
Yes, I wouldn't need it here in front of the, yeah.
But you, you wouldn't need any relief from the board, is the way that I read it.
Okay.
But in, but I don't...
And that's what, you understand, you guys could grant that. So you can, you can think about that, you can sort of...
We'd need, we'd need a survey that would, you know, unequivocally prove those, those numbers.
Well, is this...
This is an engineer's.
It's an engineer's plan, and they do have, they do have the neighbors, I was looking for that.
Oh, good, okay, no, I hadn't seen that, thank you.
Well, what's the average, is it 200, is it 200 feet?
Unless there's, unless there's an, if there's an intervening street, then you can stop at the corner of the street.
There's only two homes on the block, it's her home and one other.
So above the Murray's is not another home?
No, it's Seaview Ave.
Yeah, it's...
And then it's Seaview Ave.
It's a short block.
Gotcha.
Yeah, sorry, that shit, I had to insert, show you, yeah, so there's only the two of us on that, that part.
I think Steve has a comment.
You what? Well, we're not ready for Steve, it's not ready for Steve time players yet. When we, when we take public comments, we'll be talking to Steve. So, do you have anything else to add, Anthony? John?
No, that was the same question I had on the average.
Yeah. Frank?
No, that was what jumped out at me.
Is there anyone in the audience who wish to speak? Mr. Bjorklund?
Sure, I'd love to, and I haven't seen the plan, but is this actually a pre-existing non-conforming residence that doesn't need a setback?
Yes.
It absolutely is a special permit, not a variance, I would request a continuance and bring your attorney back, it's not a variance.
Okay. Well, I think at this point, it can hurt me to do a continuance, and I will, will think of things.
Maybe Mr., maybe Mr. Bjorklund would like to act as your attorney, but he is not licensed or insured, so, okay, if you want a continuance, you can certainly have a continuance.
Yeah, okay, I mean, not choose to come back, but I, you can't hurt to have, you know, I will let you know before that.
If you could just put, put it in writing for the secretary, just a, one sentence, you know, stated, the next meeting would be March 19th.
Right.
Before we continue it, though, let me just say, whatever the standard is, from my point of view, I think we've been reluctant to dramatically increase setbacks, and so I just encourage you to consider that, that, that...
I do agree with that.
Yeah.
I've got to say that there are certain things in this neighborhood that...
I, I hear you on that, I hear you on that, yeah.
Um, and I mean, I, you know, and I'm not trying to go in front of my, you know, I'm not trying to overextend what my neighbor has, so I'm actually trying to keep the streetscape rather than create, you know, I understand what you're saying, if I didn't have this neighbor next to me, and I was trying to come out, and then I've just changed the whole streetscape, I would completely agree with you, but I just feel that I'm really trying to keep things in line with what's going on there, I'm not trying to create a bigger scenario because there's already this non-conforming next to me, I'm already non-conforming, we're just kind of filling in that piece.
But you understand, each, each application is taken on its own, we don't look at what some other board might have done at another time.
I'm just saying, no.
Right.
Just on the streetscape, I'm not trying to extend further, so I understand, if that neighbor wasn't there, and I came here and said I wanted to jump 12 feet in front of my neighbor's house, I probably wouldn't grant it, but I'm really just trying to continue the line down the street, in which I feel I'm not really changing the fabric of the neighborhood by being granted that, I'm really just continuing the line of the street that's already there, and it's only for a portion because of the angle of the house, it's really only going to be 20 feet of that house versus doing, you know, as my neighbors, the entire lot, so, you know, I just felt in the perception of how things are, a lot of times, we're trying to keep the fabric of the neighborhood continuing, and that's what I felt that this was doing.
We do that, and without any question, but the problem is, is that we can only do it within the confines of the law.
No, I get that, I'm just, yeah, I'm just...
If we could help you, trust me, we'd very, we'd love to help you.
No, but my, I mean, my explanation for trying to do it in this location was because it's the streetscape, I'm just trying to continue that, I'm not trying to create some sort of admirality on my site.
But you do have, you do have some room to make, you know, you're talking about four feet, so you do have some room to move, you know, whatever, northeast, kind of going this way, you know, and, you know, to kind of, maybe it'll end up being a little bit bigger in some areas than you had hoped, but, you know, you've got room on the side yard, you know, you were only talking about four feet, you know, maybe you want to go home and rethink your design, too, and then not have to be back at all.
Sarah, I think I have one thing to add, just so our cards are on the table, especially if we're going to see you back, for special permit versus variance, doesn't 620.4A, which allows the average, and if she was going down to 23.05, would make this allowed as of right, doesn't that mean that at present, and even down to 23.05, this building is conforming as to the setback? So I don't see it as presently non-conforming.
I don't understand what you're saying.
It's supposed to be 30 feet from the street, but it's 28.
Well, it's supposed to be 30 feet or 23.05.
No, that's only, that's only as if you're changing, otherwise, you don't, don't look at that, you know, don't say that that makes it conforming if it's the average. That's talking about if you're coming in and getting, and you're getting a modification, if you're wanting to do some building, that's, that's how it's got to be, but that doesn't, that doesn't make, if somebody's the average, make them conforming.
Wow.
I'm in here, but for that same reason, I know it was granted, because that was...
But the average is a guideline for, for us, for people who are going to change something.
But I don't, to, to build up to the average, I don't think you need any relief from the board.
No, I should be able to just...
Right, I agree with that, but, but my thinking then is that it's, it's not currently non-conforming, which would push the extension into the variance standard versus the special permit standard. You see, but it's contradicting what you said before, but...
That's why I asked if it was pre-existing non-conforming.
But I, I would argue that this building is presently conforming as to setback because of 610, 620.4.
It's an argument, but I don't, I don't...
To be honest, it's not a question that's in front of us right now.
Right, right, right.
It's, it's not something we should...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's in, well, it's in the R3, and the R3 has a certain setback requirement, which it does not meet.
Right.
Okay, so, then the question is whether 620.4 applies if you're going to do something, are you, you're saying 620.4...
I think it might have five, the R3 setback. I think it modifies the R3 setback.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Well, was...
Because it's automatic.
Building before zoning.
Pardon me?
It was built before zoning, 52.
Right.
So...
That's why it's pre-existing, nonconforming.
Right.
Great.
Okay, well, I think you've got a good sense of where we're coming from. And, so don't take it critically. I, I mean, I think you've done nice work, but...
Oh, yeah, it looks like a beautiful, from the, whatever. All right, the drawings are beautiful. It looks like it'd be a, a nice place, but...
So do we have a motion to request a...
Yeah. You want to come back March 19th?
Yes.
Move to continue the hearing on Two Curtis Ave to March 19th.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you March 19th?
I'm sorry.
That's okay, take your time.
Yeah. Keep it.
Thank you. Thanks.
We have minutes to approve. I just had one comment on the minutes. First of all, they're very good, but the can, the extension on page three, the last sentence of the, just before the motion? It says, "In the event the permit was to expire, we will require a revote," and actually it will require a new application for the variance. Is everybody, I don't know if everybody else, I don't know, do we vote on amended minutes?